Hello. 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 Thank you for all having a seat so we can get started. We have a very busy night. We have two forums we're putting on, so we want to get started and we will honor your time. Good evening, community members. I'm going to read this. On behalf of the League of Women Voters of Fremont County, I welcome you this evening to our candidate forums for Lander City Council and Fremont County School District Number One. I'm Linda Barton. I'm the Chair of the League of Women Voters of Fremont County, and we are pleased that we have been hosting 10 candidate forums during the 2024 election season.[51.28][51.28](APPLAUSE). Thank you. All over the county, it was a lot. The League of Women Voters of Fremont County is a nonpartisan grassroots organization that is part of the state and national League of Women Voters. The League believes voters should play a critical role in democracy and encourage informed and active government participation. The League is dedicated to voter education, voting rights, and providing information that helps voters make informed decisions at the polls. The League does not support or endorse any candidate running for office. The League distributes unbiased candidate information through our digital general election voter guide, also mailed to 19,000 residents, excuse me, households in Fremont County. Our Be a Voter Guide informs the citizens how to register, request an absentee ballot, and other need-to-know voter information. Please consider adding your name to our email listserv on the sign-up sheet at our information table, and please visit our Facebook page or website for information on elections. Tonight's forum is being livestreamed by County 10 and will be available online afterward at County 10 YouTube, Facebook, and the League's website, l w v 10 dot org. We thank our county clerk, Julie Fries, and the Fremont County Election Office staff for providing guidance and information over the past few months in registering voters. Thank you to Maggie Miller for moderating this forum and County 10 for hosting our forum videos and providing the sound system. Of course, we want to thank our candidates for running for elected office. It is a commitment to time, energy, and emotional and mental strength. Please note that each forum has several candidates running for office. We want to provide each candidate enough time to share their platforms, and we'll do our best to keep the forums running on time. This election season, as I said, we hosted 10 forums. These are our last two forums, and we hope you will agree that they have offered you, the voters, information to make informed decisions when you go to vote. In addition, check your emails tomorrow for the release of our 2024 General Election Guide in English and in Spanish, which have also been sent, as I said, to households across the county. The guides will be available in the County 10 Elections section, our website at l w v 10 dot org, and also the social media. Early voting has started on the 8th, and the election is just around the corner. Please make sure you are registered to vote. Vote early or on Election Day, but vote. Your vote is your voice, and every vote counts. Thank you for your interest and participation in local, county, state, and national elections. Our goal is to continue serving the residents of Fremont County each election season with information on candidates, issues, and policies that affect us every day. And before I go on with this, I want to thank, I want to thank Michelle Escudero for her work that she has done diligently over the last few months. I don't know where she is, but please give her a round of applause.[283.83][283.83](APPLAUSE). Well, there you are. Michelle, thank you very much, really. Michelle has been instrumental in getting these forums taken and our Election Guide together. With that, please welcome our moderator for tonight's forum, Maggie Miller, who will introduce the guidelines and begin tonight's event.
Hello and welcome, and thank you for coming to this really important forum. I am Maggie Miller. I am a mother here of two daughters who grew up here in Lander and call it their home. I don't get to vote in this particular election because I live just outside the city limits, so you'll have to listen carefully and vote for me. I believe firmly that democracy is both a right and a responsibility, so we need you to vote. We've got Dan Hahn and Jenny Young on Ward 1, and Julia Stubble and Zach Malum for Ward 2, and Melinda Cox is here kindly to air thoughts. It's great. Happy to have you here as well. The forum's going to begin with prepared opening statements, two minutes per person, and then we're going to have 11 questions. One minute is all you get because we have all these questions and then another forum that's really important, so you're going to have to be really concise. And we'll do 11 questions, and then there's going to be a couple audience questions. Volunteers will circulate, and there will be cards for you to write questions down on. And then we will end with a closing statement of one minute. For that one-minute period you get to answer, Sam will hold up this lovely orange obnoxious card to tell you you only have 15 seconds left. So I'm going to be quiet, and let's get started, and maybe we'll start with Melinda because you're here on the end. Oh, I want to say one last thing. The questions are going to be asked in a computerized randomized manner, so you're just going to randomly be asked these things. You'll see.
Thank you, Maggie. Good evening. My name is Melinda Cox. It is a pleasure to be here this evening, and thank you all for your attendance and taking part in a very important process for our democracy. This would be, if elected, this would be my third term serving as a Lander City Council member. I started, now I don't even remember, 2016, 12, 16, and served in Ward 2 for that term. I moved across Main Street and had to sit a year out before I could run again, and I ran in the, for 2020 and was elected at that time. I'm originally from Grand Junction, Colorado. I moved here in 1999 where I raised two children, both attending Lander schools. We've participated in every activity possible. I've been employed by the Fremont County Government. I started in 1999 and ended my career there in 2022 when I took a position with the Fremont County School District Number One. It was a little short-lived. It wasn't quite busy enough for my personality, so I took another position recently with an agency called All Rise, which is the National Association of Drug Court Professionals. It's a treatment court institute where we train, we provide training and technical assistance across the country for treatment courts. If you're not familiar with treatment courts, those are courts that are specialty courts that serve participants who are impacted by substance use disorder. I've been doing that for my entire adult career, essentially. And funny enough, you can do the math, but I turned 50 today. And so, thank you, and it's a pleasure to be here. And it's a, it's a pleasure to serve Lander. I'm a Landerite through and through because of our community members, so thank you again for being here.
Thank you, Melinda. Hand it to Zach. Thanks.
Thank you all for being here this evening. My name is Zach Malum. I grew up in a small town in upstate New York that is best known for being the home of the Baseball Hall of Fame. I'm accustomed to living in a small town, and that's what attracted me to Lander in the first place. I am a lawyer here in town. I've been in practice since 2018, and in addition to having a private practice, I'm also a public defender. I try to approach problems methodically, and I always try to approach things with an eye towards an ultimate solution. I've never been elected to any position before, but I do have some government experience in that I've been part of the Planning Commission and Board of Adjustment since 2020, where I'm currently serving as Chairman of that board. Some of you may have heard me speak at the City Council meeting the other night in support of the zoning changes that we, as a board, have decided to propose to the City Council. I have two small children, one two-years-old, one just a couple of months old, and I really want this town to be a safe, secure place to grow up, where my kids can hopefully someday walk to school on, you know, a continuous sidewalk that we don't seem to have anywhere in town. And I would really look for, I do look forward to answering these questions and any other questions that the public might have for me at any time other than during this forum. Thank you very much.
Hi, everyone. My name's Julia Stubble, and I'm running for a second term on Ward, or for Ward 2. It's been a real privilege the last four years to serve you and to serve Lander, and I've certainly learned a great deal. I'm excited to use that experience to continue to make informed decisions with your feedback for another four years. I moved to Lander in 2012 with my husband. I work in public land policy for a conservation organization, and we stay pretty busy with an 18-month-old who is now running a lot around our house, and it's been a real pleasure. So look forward to also contributing to and building a Lander that she can grow up in and enjoy like many of you have. I think we'll dive a little bit more deeper into a lot of my priorities through some of the questions, I suspect, but I'll list a few priorities I have right now to give you an overview. First, our infrastructure, keeping our roads intact and safe, our water and sewer lines running cleanly and, and as they should. We have a lot of opportunity right now to make up and fix some of the problems that neglect has happened for the last couple decades. Next, open government. I've championed public comment during council meetings and look forward to hearing feedback during our meetings, before our meetings, after, whenever you want to provide it. I think it's essential that government listens to and fully represents the people that we serve. My third priority is public safety, and I have supported and budgeted accordingly for our police department to have the resources they need and our fire department as well, and look forward to making sure that's a priority for another four years. And lastly, housing, the hot topic of the moment, of course. We all know of people who have struggled, and perhaps you have struggled, to obtain the type of housing that you need in Lander. We have businesses who report it's the top concern that they have, including the hospital and our school system, and I think that there's a variety of answers to this problem, but the city can take an attack or can take, take an attempt to solve a few of them. So lastly, look forward to hearing from you. I've enjoyed the, the feedback of the last four years and excited to dive into these questions further. Thanks for coming tonight.
Hello, everyone. I am Jenny Young, and I am running to represent Ward 1 on the Lander City Council. First, thank you very much, all, for being here today again. Your presence shows that you care about the future of our community, and that is so important because we all know one thing for certain: Change is inevitable. Our world is evolving, and Lander is no exception. But with that change, it's equally important that we preserve the character and history that makes this community special. As someone who has lived and worked in Ward 1, I've seen both the challenges we face and the unique qualities that define our community. My goal is to ensure that while we move forward and embrace change, we also protect the values, traditions, and identity that make Lander a place we're all proud to call home. My background in special education has taught me how to advocate, solve problems creatively, and find solutions that work for everyone. In times of change, these skills are essential. As we look to improve public services, support local businesses, and address housing and infrastructure, I'm committed to doing so in a way that honors our community's roots while building toward a stronger future. In uncertain times, we're often told to choose between fear and hope, but I believe in a third option: action. Action rooted in both progress and preservation. Action driven by courage, empathy, and a deep respect for the past. It's through conversations like these, where we come together as community members and residents, that we can ensure Lander's future is built on the strong foundation of our shared history. The challenges we face are not beyond our reach, and the changes we experience don't have to erase what we hold dear. Together, we can adapt to the demands of a changing world while preserving what makes Lander unique. So let's work together. I'm eager to hear your ideas, concerns, and hopes, and I always go over time, for our community. Let's ensure that change works in our favor, protecting our past while creating a brighter future for all of us. Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
My name is Dan Hahn. I'm running for Lander City Council, Ward 1. Thank you, League of Women Voters, for taking the time and effort to put on this forum. At the last forum, Kirk and I were labeled as old fools by some in this community. I'd like to identify myself as a realist that really loves Lander. There are a few things you probably don't know about me. I've been using two off-grid solar systems for almost 30 years. I spend hundreds of dollars a year supporting animals in need. I spend hundreds of dollars a year feeding birds and squirrels. I also make squirrel houses and donate them to charities to auction off. I also donate to the Tunnel of Towers, Wounded Warriors, and Wyoming Rescue Mission to help people in need. We also grow a huge garden so we can share vegetables with friends, family, and the senior center. I've been, I believe in Lander continuing to be beautiful western town people would love to live in. I believe in city being fiscally responsible to its citizens. I believe it's my responsibility to take all concerns to City Hall and not have my own personal agenda. I believe in a supply of healthy water for all citizens within Lander and for those who are living outside of Lander that haul water. I believe in working towards improving our infrastructure and having streets that don't have potholes that are damaging our cars. I believe in having an active park and rec program that has activities to keep our children busily, busy, and mentally challenged. I believe, I believe in everyone being treated equal, no special privileges. We are all human. I believe in our great police department and fire department keeping us safe. I believe in upholding local western traditions and respecting our veterans. But most of all, I believe that this is going to be a fun and informational evening, and thank everybody who's attending.
We're going to send the first question to Jenny, but I wanted to say that I failed to mention that if we could hold our applause until the end, it would help the candidates keep their train of thought. So Ms. Jenny Young, if elected to the City Council, what qualifications in leadership will you bring?
So like I said in my introduction, I am a pretty creative problem solver, and one of the skill sets that I have is being able to hold two seemingly contradictory truths to be true at the same time, and to be able to find a way to bridge with the people that I work with so that we can find solutions instead of just getting stalled out in not knowing what to do and not making a choice and not moving forward, because there are a lot of strong opinions, especially people who are on City Council, who come to City Council meetings. You come because you have these strong opinions about how you want to see the city, and it's important that that gets listened to and taken into consideration and incorporated into what we're trying to do.
Julia, you're up.
Thank you. That's a great question. Thanks so much. I have, in addition to the last four years on the City Council, which is incredible, learning by fire about leadership, I would say, I have been the chairperson of several statewide organization boards. I direct a department in my own employment, place of employment as well, and I think that the way I approach leadership or qualifications is making sure that we found our, or base our decision-making in good data, making sure that we gather all the resources we need to understand what the problem is, understand if we are framing the problem in the same way, and I think we'll come back to that probably in some questions later tonight because I think that some of the challenges we face as a city is how we frame the problems or understand the issues. Clearly incorporate in feedback from everyone who's affected or has an expertise in the issue, and then make sure to make a decision in an expeditious manner as well and not to overanalyze even though you're gathering quite a bit of data. So thanks for the question.
Dan, you're next.
Well, besides the, the time I've spent on council, I grew up in a family business. We were in business for 30 years, 17 years. I ran the company and to, just to show you, or to tell you how, how large it was, we, we grossed from a million to four million a year. Then I, we sold the company. I went to work for, for YDOT, spent 11 years as supervisor, learning all the maintenance qualifications and everything from the state. Anyways, that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, Melinda, one minute.
Thank you. For me, leadership is really about how, how you lead, meaning how you conduct yourself, who you involve in your decision-making process. Part of being a good leader is understanding that you're not the expert in everything, that it's not always just your way, or that it's the way that you believe and that you want other people to believe and respond the same way you do. That's not a good leader. That's not a good team. I'm, I'm an athlete from the time I could walk, and so I believe in an, in an honest, open style of communication, that you have candid conversations with people and that you're real about who you are and what you stand for. I think sometimes we forget that it's the differences among us that bring us together, and that it's because of those differences that we're able to make the best decisions that we possibly can for everybody.
Zach, what qualifications in leadership will you bring?
Well, as I alluded to in my opening statement, I am an attorney, and as an attorney, I have to advocate for my clients. In this case, my clients, as part of, in my capacity as City Council member, would be the people of Lander, not just the people in Ward 2, but the people all throughout the city. And in doing so, I would, of course, have to negotiate everybody's particular needs and preferences and ultimately advocate for what seems to be the majority opinion of the people in the city of Lander. Regarding my other qualifications, I've actually, when I was younger, I worked for the village of, the village where I grew up as a lifeguard and as a caretaker, and so I had to deal with a variety of different folks in leadership positions there, and I was able to navigate some pretty difficult situations, and feel free to ask me about that later. Thank you.
You can keep the mic. You're starting us off on this next round. Each of you have been given the list of strategic priorities. They're there on the table. From that list, which two are the most and least important, and why?
To me, the two most important are code enforcement and safe routes to schools. I live right by Gannett Peak Elementary, and it just boggles my mind why there is a crosswalk to nowhere right in front of the school on the corner of Sweetwater and It doesn't make any sense to me why we would have our routes to schools set up as they are when so many kids live in town and could so easily walk or bike to whatever school it is that they attend. Regarding code enforcement, I see a lot of instances where, and I, many of these are brought to my attention in my capacity as Chairman of the Planning Commission and Board of Adjustment, but it seems that the local law enforcement don't take some pretty necessary code matters seriously, and I would like to see that improved. Thank you.
Dan, what are your thoughts on that?
Water is number one. I, I think that water, I believe it's, it's, I think it's, the farther we go down the trail, water is going to be the most important thing we have. Second for me is safer house to school, protecting the kids. Pretty simple for me, water and the kids. Thank you.
So I'm going to repeat the question just because maybe when we drafted it, we worded it a little hard. From that list, we want to know two of the most and least important, if those of you following, and, and we can, you can have a moment a little bit later if you want to add. Julia, why don't you take that question?
Thanks for the re-clarification. I mean, clearly, they're priorities for a reason because we can tackle all of them. The city can chew gum and walk at the same time, so we're not trying to choose between any of these. But personally, when it comes to budgeting or planning, I would say that the top priority for our, is housing. It is so fundamental for our business development, for our attracting new families, for attracting retirees, and for maintaining the population we have and managing for growth. We have got to solve the housing problem that we have and provide a varied array of different types of housing options in Lander, and we can do so by maintaining the character of our community. I would say one of the least important priorities on the list is land acquisition for economic development. The city has yet to fill the business park that we have. Lita, I think, is working on this, but I see more acquisition for economic development as a little bit lower down the list as we tackle some of the, the more longer-term problems on this list.
Melinda?
Thank you. I would say the two most important for me is water, specifically as it relates to our infrastructure and as, as our redundancy. I know that if you've been paying attention to our water plan and what we've done up to this point, we definitely have some needs within our community to address that and, rather quickly. We have a nice water tank now, so that makes, makes it, at least we're solving some of the problem. The other thing that I want to add within that is fiscal sustain, fiscal sustainability. You know, I, it's not on the list, but I need you to understand that that's what drives a lot of these decisions and what we're trying to accomplish within the city. I want it to be very clear when I say what the, my, my second real on the list priority is, is having a solution to our flood mitigation. That has been lingering for a long time, and we've not resolved it. I want us to finish that up and just have a answer to it. The two least important are fiber, interconnectivity, and land acquisition as well.
Thank you. Jenny?
All right, last for this question. So my priorities for what I'd like to see the city do is anything that has to do with the basics of infrastructure, the things that keep the city going and the things that the community members need from the city to be able to keep living their lives and doing their things. And so I feel like it kind of weaves through a lot of these things, but the attainable housing is really high up on the list. We have houses that are for sale, but they're not attainable. People who live here and work here can't get those houses. We need to figure out how to make, make it so our workforce can live in Lander. And then I would have to say I would go with the safe routes to schools because I do think that the kids being able to get to school in a timely and safe manner is incredibly important, and I'd like to see sidewalks that are everywhere. My least favorite of the priorities is the land acquisition for economic development, and that's just because Lander does already have quite a bit of land.
Okay, Zach, 10 seconds, some lees.
I would have to echo what seems to be the consensus of land acquisition for economic development and also funding air service. I don't think that should be a priority of our city government. Thank you.
Dan, you want another second? Are you good?
I, I think my least definitely would be new park development. We've got the mountain here. I think the other ones will be a step up above that.
Okay, Julia, you're starting us off on this one. Given Lander's diversity of people and backgrounds, how will you represent and communicate with people who do not necessarily share your values?
Sure. I mean, what a wonderful question because we have such an incredibly varied amount of perspectives in town. So, I mean, I think it's, it's a basic answer, right? It's sitting down to listen with an open heart and open ears, starting from understanding intentions and values, seeing if you can find some shared space there, instead of starting at the end of the conversation, which is what is the fix? I think too often we start with a, we should do X or we should do Y, and it's only one of those two options, instead of understanding what do we need to get to a solution and how can we co-create that together and understand that there's more gray area, right, often in those answers. I mean, take the, the housing issue in front of us today. We have a proposal. We're going to debate it. We're going to incorporate feedback from a wide array of people, and we're going to modify it, I imagine, and find someplace in between instead of the, the sort of black or white answers that we otherwise often just lean into. Thanks.
Thank you. Zach?
The key, of course, is simply listening and making yourself available to those who want to talk to you, even if you might think at the outset that you don't agree with what they might have to say. More than likely, you'll find that when you actually take the time to listen to somebody with a different view, you can find common ground and incorporate that into any kind of plan that you need to present as an advocate for the people of Lander. Thank you.
Dan, how do you propose to do that?
Dan, how do you propose to do that?
Everybody sounded pretty good. That's exactly what I was thinking. Yes, I concur with that. Keep a positive attitude and communicate while listening. You know, you have to, you have to do everything that they said. Sounded good. Very good.
Jenny, what do you think?
Yeah, so I agree with, yeah, agree across the board. Because I do think that finding common ground and building bridges is the most important thing we can do, but seeing each other's humanity. Sometimes I think we forget, especially when we're on our keyboard warrior, we forget that there's a human behind that screen and that every human that you come across has the same emotions and desires that you do. And just remembering that the person you're talking to is a human and has feelings and is just feeling those feelings to the extent that they can and that they're sharing that with you. And so to honor them by being present in the moment with them, listening to them and not like thinking to respond, but just being able to listen and take the time with them and take the space and give them the space to be with you.
Melinda?
Thank you. It is something that I've had to do my entire professional career, working in criminal justice, specifically with juvenile justice, as well as other agencies. It's an incredible thing if you become an expert on your own emotional intelligence, understanding how you respond to things so that you don't negatively impact an opportunity for growth or communication. The other thing that's unique about being a city council member is when people have a question or a concern, it's always in an aspect of what they think is best for our community. Not, nobody wants to like, you know, shut the doors to Lander. We just want it to be better. And sometimes you have to have common ground and you have to understand where people are coming from, but you first have to make sure that you're not putting your own issues on other people.
Dan, you're up on this one. To protect citizens and city infrastructure, determining a flood mitigation plan is a first level priority in the city's strategic plan. What should the priorities of a comprehensive, what should be the priorities of a comprehensive flood mitigation plan?
I believe that we are, are working on a comprehensive plan. But I think it's, I, I think there's a lot more entailed than most people understand. There's a lot of different ways to, to accomplish flood mitigation, both cost and affecting people with private property. This, this one's a delicate, this is very delicate and this one is a very, a tough one for me. That's why I've always really wanted to, to use the temporary instead of, of the actual flood wall that they're talking about. Because if we, if we go with a permanent flood wall, we are going to affect a lot of people's lives. And I've talked to a lot of people that have lived here for a lot of years and they, they're saying that the temporary is all we need.
Zach, what do you think?
I grew up at the top of a watershed and in my experience, the key to handle potential for flooding downstream is to make sure that you have an adequate reservoir at the very top. Here, it seems that you can try to accomplish both the water master plan, or at least enhance the ability of, or the capacity of our water sources by deepening Worthing and perhaps raising the dam and perhaps also apply that, even though it's not city property, to Frye Lake to try to capture more water before it comes down into town. Now, not being a water engineer, that very well might not be a practical thing to do, but it seems to me that if we're going to try to be successful with managing flooding, we need to start at the very top rather than closest to home. Thank you.
Julia?
Thank you. It is essential that our flood mitigation plan is solving for two problems. One, the one we can all imagine and have experienced, floodwaters in the streets and in your basements. And two, the fact that there has been new mapping done that now classifies most of central Lander as part of the floodplain. Now, that means those people who will be seeking new mortgages on properties, businesses, homes, will need to buy flood insurance, which is going to be expensive for a wide variety of people in Lander. Temporary flood barriers do not solve the flood insurance problem by having Lander now be part of the floodplain. So we're solving both getting water where it needs to be back in the river when it comes through the ditch system into the top of town and keeping it out of your basements and streets and trying to avoid making sure that businesses and homes now are, are needing to buy flood insurance at great cost to individuals and those businesses. Thank you.
Jenny?
I feel like I am very skilled at a variety of things. One of those things that I'm not skilled at is understanding floods and how they work. That is not my educational background. So to understand what a good flood mitigation plan would be for Lander, I would look to the research and the studies that have been done and look at their recommendations, which I know is what has been happening and that they have been responding to feedback from the community to find a way that best meets the needs to make sure that nobody's getting flooded out and that everybody's getting, or that most everybody's getting what they would like to see have happened and have not happened. Does that make sense? But I know that the biggest thing that the city can and should do is find a way to reduce the shared and individual burden of any kind of flood that happens.
You're last again, Melinda.
Thank you. So for me, one of the priorities for the Corps of Engineers is that you cannot cause any harm downstream by any mitigation that you do. That is why we're sort of at a stalemate, because there is some harm that can be caused downstream with some of the mitigation plan. Now, I am not an engineer, not a water engineer. I'm not an engineer. I don't, I couldn't make a birdhouse or a squirrel house. I can't do any of that. But what I do know is that in talking with those experts, those engineers, water engineers, what we do have is other options besides a permanent structure that will also alleviate cost to homeowners. And there's also some personal accountability on that respect too from homeowners that has to be taken into account, not just from the city aspect. But what I will say is that we need to come up with a solution and that that needs to be a priority of the city so that we can move forward.
Okay. Thank you. So for the audience, after this next question, volunteers will be collecting cards, so get busy writing if you haven't. Zach, you're first on this. Excuse me. Julia, you're first on this and it's going to be after the sixth round. So do you believe that economic diversity should be a city priority? Why or why not? If so, how should the city encourage economic diversity?
Yeah, I mean, a hundred percent. It has to be a priority for the city, but not solely of the cities. Economic diversification or development is a complex endeavor, of course, right, of public and private partnerships and entities and the city is an important player in that. The city can and must provide the infrastructure that creates Lander, makes Lander a place where businesses and people want to be and live. So that includes the basics we've talked about, right? Having safe streets, having the water and sewer lines available that we need for growth, but also park systems, right? Businesses will want to locate here when they know that they have a workforce that can, want to be here as well, or they can pull from the existing workforce. And so we, as a city, are responsible for the foundational aspects of economic development, infrastructure and base building, and then we need to be in partnership with the entities and the experts about, like LIDA or Lift or the other groups, the Chamber, who can talk about actual business recruitment and retention at a level that we cannot. Thank you.
Thank you. Zach, your thoughts?
I too agree that it's important to have a diverse economy in Lander, as with any other city. Certainly, if we, as a public, choose to fund things like the half-cent tax and have that money go to private businesses, then there need to be steps and checks in place to make sure that that money is going to businesses that actually develop the economy long-term and provide good jobs for people in Lander that can allow them to live here, given the ever-increasing cost of living. And I will leave it at that. Thank you.
Melinda, what do you think?
So I would also say that we should have some teeth in the game, obviously. We need to diversify our revenue. We can't continue to rely on extractable resources and the ebbs and flows of that is not sufficient for the needs of Lander. It is complicated and we talk about the half-cent sales tax. You know, we made some mistakes. We've said that. We've been pretty transparent about that. We learned from those mistakes. We've adjusted how we've responded to those. I think that it's hard because in, in rural communities, you have to have, we're a low-tax, low-resource state. But whatever we're doing, we need to do it well and we need to do it with thought and with consideration for long-term, not just, we need to change this because it's good for ten minutes. It needs to be good for years.
Jenny?
Yeah, so I would say that the, the city's responsibility is to take care of the community of the city. And that can look like many different things. Economic diversity is definitely important to the well-being of the citizens of the community. The city should encourage and support activities that contribute to the well-being of the community, but the cities, in my mind, the city's priority is to the community. And so that comes across in a variety of different ways. The city is not responsible for pub, private businesses coming to Lander and doing things. Like it can encourage it in certain ways, but... Does that make sense?
You're good. Dan's next.
The little squirrel just left my brain and was like, I'm taking this thought and we're leaving, so.
Hand that mic to Dan then. Thanks.
Actually, I agree with everybody. I think the only thing that I would add is I think one of the problems that were, that is evolving here is we're duplicating businesses. And what we're, what we're seeing is, is every time somebody duplicates a business, we have an impact on, on another business. And I think we really need to, we need to, really, as a city, I think we, we need to watch it. I'm hoping that the businesses are watching that, but every time you build something that somebody else has, you're gonna, you're gonna cut into what they're doing and sometimes it can, it can get rough on some of these businesses and I, I really hate to see that.
Okay. For question six. As you know, the city of Lander is divided into three wards with elected council members representing each ward. There are county residents who are part of the fabric of Lander. They work, play, shop and conduct business in town. All of these citizens are affected by the decisions of the city and council. As a council member, how will you represent citizens not represented within the ward structure, which includes me? And we'll start with you, Zach.
I still think that it's important to listen to folks outside of town. They certainly have a lot of skin in the game. As Ms. Miller indicated, they work here, they spend lots of time here, they spend lots of money here. And just because we're not necessarily vying for their vote doesn't mean that we shouldn't take their concerns into account. Thank you.
Dan?
Remember this one.
Because you were here.
I was here. Yes, I, I totally support any comments from anybody. It doesn't make any difference in there, they're in my ward, they're somebody else's ward, they're, they live out of town. I love to hear what everybody, what everybody says and, and to tell you the truth, you know, people that live outside of the, out of, outside of the city, they're part of our community. And, and I especially, and I said this last time, I would really like to see people that have businesses in town, that live outside of town, I'd really like to see them be able to vote because they've got a, they've got a lot invested in the city and, and they live in the county. Thank you.
Melinda, what do you think?
Thank you. I would agree, especially with the business owners in town. They have a lot of input. They are impacted by our decisions. One of the things that we do allow is that they're, they're able to participate and have a say within our auxiliary, auxiliary boards. So I believe, you know, we have different positions within those boards that they're able to sit on and provide input and expertise as, as it relates to being a county citizen, but also a business owner. And I think that's important. This is a, you know, Wyoming itself is a large city, for being honest. So we all know each other and we all have to work together and come up with solutions and understand where each other's coming from because it impacts you. You drive on our roads, you go to our schools, we live in the same community. You drink the water, all of the same things. So we definitely need to have candid discussions and availability for a two-way communication with county, county.
Thank you. Julia, what do you think?
I think, yeah, I think it's been well said by Mr. Han there that it's all, we're all one community. So I'm not going to ask where you live when you come to me with ideas or feedback and I have a track record of working with people from within the city and from without and in the adjacent communities. I, I will say, because we brought it up tonight, that the question of having a vote in city elections for those who are outside of city boundaries is a question for the state to solve, not for the city council to weigh in on. That's, that's a state statute. We all know the adage about taxation and representation from our long and storied histories as a nation. So I think we would welcome the property tax that comes with those votes to add to our revenue rolls if that was ever to be considered representative larson by the state. Thank you so much.
Lastly, Jenny, what do you think?
So I've, I've actually gotten this question a few times when I've been out in the community and I don't know if this is something that has been discussed before and if what the statute is for it, but I would like to see a county representative on the city council. Like I think that there should be some sort of county liaison or somebody who represents the county residents who is at city council meetings on the regular and so that they are informed and can go back and inform the county constituents of what is happening. And I don't know if that's something that we do with the county commissioners and we work with them or if we have, I don't know what the state statute is. I don't know any of that business. I just know that I think having representation on the board, having somebody at the table is the best way to get their voice heard.
Okay. Thank you. So if you in the audience have a question, please hold the card up and a volunteer will collect if they haven't. All right. Melinda, we're going to start this one with you. Do you support the Lander Investment for Tomorrow program referred to as LIFT? Why or why not? And would you propose any changes?
So yes, I support the LIFT board, volunteer boards, people who spend a lot of their own personal time to provide us with information and recommendations. I value that. There have been some difficult discussions in reference to LIFT and there have been things about the half-cent economic development tax that I haven't loved. And that is that we started, we didn't start it correctly and we've had to make a lot of changes in the process for the last four years and that hasn't sat right with me. I don't love doing that to constituents. I don't love changing my mind midstream. I do appreciate saying we messed up and to put the brakes on, but I am, I do, I have struggled with the changes that we have made and I've said that in council. While I think it's important that we made them because we've made some mistakes, I have not loved that process, but I do really appreciate the LIFT committee.
Thank you. Jenny, what do you think?
Yeah, so with the LIFT committee, I actually spent some time doing some research and I have this little packet that was a presentation about how the impact of Fremont County's retail sales tax. And what I think is important is to recognize what the half-percent tax and what has benefited Fremont County. So it's, this says that more than $24 million with over 250 direct and indirect jobs were created. That's a lot of jobs being created from that tax. Over $1 million in state and local tax revenue was generated by investment of the sales tax proceeds, $1 million in state and local tax revenue and around $250,000 was collected in Fremont County. So it seems to be beneficial, but I do think it needs to be made sure that it is the most effective.
Okay. You can give the mic to Dan. Here you go, Dan. Oh, you have a mic.
Never mind.
Yes, yes, I do, I believe in the, in the LIFT program and the, and the half-percent. Yes, yes, I do...I believe in the LIFT program and the half percent. The reason why is because it's saving the taxpayers in Lander a little bit of money. Because LIFT has been paying for all these entities like the airport, and...which is saving money coming out of the general fund. Usually, it's several hundred thousand dollars a year plus. So I definitely support that. I do believe that we need to narrow the vision of what economic development is. It's pretty broad. And a lot of the...a lot of my constituents have had a real problem with what people define economic development. Now, I do like a lot of the different things that are kind of out of the spectrum, but I think we need to be careful of that.
Okay, thank you. Zach, you're up.
I generally support the concept of having a half-cent, or half percent, I should say, sales tax to support economic development. I think what city council needs to do is listen to the public, see what the public wants to do in terms of economic development, and provide good guidance to the LIFT board to allocate funds appropriately and effectively. I have to say, I am not a huge fan of sales tax revenue going to fund something like the airport. I think that if the airport is something that is so necessary that we're going to be funding it every year, then perhaps we need to have a more dedicated funding source, perhaps from a special district. As much as people hate their property taxes to rise, I think that makes the most sense from a permanency standpoint. Thank you.
Okay, and lastly, Julia.
Thank you. I stand behind the distributions that we've made of the LIFT grant money in the past few years. I think, as Melinda highlighted so well, Council President Cox, we...it was an experiment to have a city distribute grant money to private business per the will of the voters, right, who passed the half percent economic development tax. So we learned a lot, and we have made adjustments to make sure that we are granting money to competitive businesses who are bringing jobs and new money into town, and achieving those economic development goals. The impact that you have detailed, Ms. Young, it's so important for the town. Now, ultimately, whether or not we support LIFT is going to matter on if that tax passes again. And in November, it will be essential for our airports and service that we have that tax pass. And if we are then granted, through the city, the authority to continue to distribute some less funds to grants, I think we'll use the process that we've refined over the last few years, and continue to listen to the people about what you want to see happen, and make sure that we are bringing in those jobs and new money into town.
Okay, let's start this round with Jenny, even though it doesn't say so. Because we had Dan first several times here. If we went by this. How do you see Lander adapting to meet housing needs?
Will you say that one more time? I'm sorry.
How do you see Lander adapting to meet housing needs?
I don't...I'm not gonna lie, I don't fully understand the question. Like, how do I see that it needs to adapt? Or how do I see that it is currently adapting?
I suppose, what would you propose?
Okay, okay. Yeah, all right, all right. Yeah, good call. Okay, so I...looking at all of the zoning changes that the zoning board and commission has spent four years working on, which blows my mind, it boggles my brain, there are some really good suggestions in there for creative building for contractors. I am in agreement with a majority of people that I've spoken with, and the height is a little too high, I think, in some of them. But I think that that's probably for a reason that I would need to talk to Zach about and get some more information on. The biggest thing that I think is, if we...whatever we do, we need to make sure that we're not just putting more rentals into Lander. We need to make it so that people can have houses they can buy, so they can invest in Lander, in their property, and they can own it, instead of somebody who already owns land, just building a bunch of apartments on it and profiting off of other people not owning anything.
What do you think, Zach?
There's very little that the city of Lander can do to actually move the needle on housing affordability. So much of it is market-driven, and we have very few tools at our disposal to try to make any changes to housing supply. What I have worked with the Planning Commission and Board of Adjustment on are a number of compromises that we have decided would potentially increase opportunities for landowners to get a little bit more creative with the houses that you can put in town, and what kinds of dwelling units could be there. I think that the most important change we've made is that in certain zones, we've allowed folks to build accessory...well, additional structures to potentially house family members and loved ones. And I think that would be the best benefit to the most people. Thank you.
Melinda?
Thank you. Yes, Lander doesn't have a lot of control over what the housing needs are. And this is an issue that has to be resolved at a much higher level, a higher governmental level. It's a...you would have to partner. We would need to partner with the state. The state would need to partner with the federal government. And all municipalities across the country would need to come together. This is not an issue that's driven by Lander. This is an issue that's driven by interest rates. It's an issue that's driven by corporations who've come in and purchased homes and are driving the market. It's happening all over. It's not...it's...we're not special that it's happening here in Lander. The issue that I have is that the folks that we want to be coming into our community and living here and being able to raise families here are not able to afford housing. But we have absolutely no control over that. So there has to be compromise in how we zone Lander to increase the supply, so that there's at least opportunity for people to afford to live here regardless, and have better-paying jobs, which goes back to our economic development plan and our diversity.
Julia?
A minute is not enough. So please come to our meetings and weigh in as we vote on the code changes that are in front of us. Those are an important part of the answer of what we can control and what we can try to do. But they're not the only part of the answer, to making sure Lander's a town where you can live, work, play, buy a home, rent if you need to, retire, and have your family around you. I think we need to explore limitations on the number of short-term rentals in town, so that we're not just building new short-term rentals that are going to be high-priced and not actually provide workforce housing for those in town. I think we need to look at other incentives for some of the city land we have, or some of the employers who are suffering the most from having problems with workforce retention and recruitment. But ultimately, it's looking at a whole package of policy solutions, accepting what we can't control or influence, and making sure we take a real honest try at what we can, instead of throwing our hands up. Thank you.
Thank you. Dan, you can close this round out.
I would love to. I think Lander does have control here. It's not a lot, but I think we do. I think one of the things, and I've talked to people all over the country, Airbnbs and short-term rentals are screwing everything up. What they are doing is they are...they're stealing the lower-priced houses in town. And this is individuals, this is corporations going into towns and buying cheap housing. But what they're doing is, they're buying this up, and then they're renting it. That is taking...that is taking houses away from people. And they're the houses that people, especially young people, can afford, the cheaper ones. Well, they're being...they're being bought up. We've got 125 units that are in town right now that are screwing things up. They're units that...and the other one I wanted to get in, the zoning. If we change the zoning, the zoning needs to fit all involved, especially the people in the affected areas. Not people like the zoning's gonna affect Northside. Thank you.
You can keep that mic, Dan. The city just received the bid for Lincoln Street pavement for $7.2 million for 1.3 to 4 mile...1 and 3/4 miles of road. This equates to $1,439 per linear foot for pavement, curb, gutter, water, and sewer lines. For another reference, a standard neighborhood block would cost about $820,134. Given the high price tag of infrastructure projects, grant funding is one of the necessary funding sources. What is your understanding of the grant funding process? If you do not support external funding sources, what should replace these funding sources?
No, I support...I support the grants. As far as...as far as what's happening right now, we're post-COVID, and everything's three times the price. So we're going to have to...we're gonna have to deal...we're gonna have to get money wherever we can get it. But one of the problems we're having, and it's just like we have had the last couple of years, nothing is getting done, because we lost a lot of contractors in the COVID years. And so...and we're not getting out-of-state contractors. So we've got a few in-state, and that's what we're having to deal with. One of the problems that I see is, is we're gonna have to go with some kind of topping to fix these...the top of the streets, because we're never going to. If we're gonna do one street, you know, every two or three years, it's gonna be pretty bad.
Julia?
Yep. Also, a strong supporter for grants. We've benefited an immense amount in the city of Lander from grants and from loans, from the state, from federal agencies that have helped us with our city streets, our water, our sewer, and our park systems, and many more examples as well. So I think it's important that we and the staff demonstrate this every day. We have our eyes wide open about what the grants require. If we have been carefully budgeting to...in order to have the match that we need to provide, we benefit a lot for our roads and streets to have the money in our budget from...because of the 1% tax that is voted on and passed by voters in the last couple of rounds. So please consider that again, because that will make an immense strides to making sure we improve those street systems. But ultimately, it's only, I think, intelligent of the city, and we have remarkable staff looking out for these opportunities to say, "Here's what we have in our budgets, and thanks to the services and those who provided that. And how do we add value and seek opportunities like those grants to be able to get much more done than we would at the pace if we only had our own budgeting?" Thanks.
Melinda?
Thank you. Yes, I of course support grant funding. It is one way that we can leverage funds that will enhance the resources that we need in our community, and streets is one of them. It's extraordinarily expensive. Building costs are expensive. We would not be able to do it with just the 1 cent sales tax. We would not be able to do it with just our local revenue and our funds that we receive. So we rely on it. And we rely on it to do, you know, quality projects that will benefit all of our constituents.
Jenny?
For the...I am a big proponent of using grant money. I...that's what I do for my job. I'm a grant coordinator for the Wyoming Education Association. But I think that the use of external funding is something that is necessary in a rural town like Lander and in Wyoming in general. We just don't have enough money in our coffers to not get money from outside sources. And so it's just being aware, as has already been stated, that we gotta be in compliance with all of the details, and that the city should not commit to things that are not in alignment with securing those foundational needs of the roads. And when it comes to the roads, I think part of the plan is like anybody who's budgeting for anything. So if you're long-term budgeting, I'm gonna try to spit this out really quick. If you're long-term budgeting, you want to have like a plan. So if we had consolidated information about every single road, where it is on the spectrum of needing to be fixed, how much of it needs to be fixed, how much of my... Awareness to where the work is moving through and to for the community. Thank you, Zach.
Grant funding's all well and good, but it's incumbent on the city council to ensure that any grants that we do accept and that we do apply for don't come with any unnecessary strings or any obligations that we might not be able to meet in the future. I think that it would be important to take a real hard look at how much our infrastructure maintenance is actually gonna cost. And if we do have to generate additional revenue from some other form, just to cover the cost of maintaining our roads and streets over the long term, and making sure that there's always going to be enough money there, then we're just gonna have to make that decision. And I think that it's very important to look to every potential source for funds, but always keeping in mind that grants are not necessarily free money, and you just have to be careful with which ones that you apply for and receive. Thank you.
Melinda, you can start this round. Currently, the county operates our ambulance service. The Lander Strategic Plan priorities includes ambulance service as a third-level priority. In the past, the city has made a one-time $100,000 ambulance subsidy. In what ways could the city council work to support a long-term solution to ambulance service? And you get one minute.
Thank you. Ambulance service is a little bit tricky. When I first moved here, it was a volunteer ambulance service. I don't know if anybody's aware of that or not. Then it became a funded service. And it is...it's difficult, because we can't really be without ambulance service. It's a...and it's costly. However, I would like to put a little bit more pressure on the county to fund it. And I think that it would be important to understand that it is really the folks that are outside of the city limits that the cost increase based on ambulance service. And so I'm happy to support a percentage of that, with the support of the half-cent sales tax, to make sure that we can continue to fund that, the service that we need. But I really would like to put a little bit more pressure on the county to fund that long-term.
Jenny, what do you think?
I agree with what Melinda is saying. I think emergency services should not be...we shouldn't be reliant on a private business to deliver our emergency services. That should...it's a public good, and it should come from public funds. And I think that the burden for paying for that should come from multiple sources. It should come from the county, from the city, and from the state potentially. And I'm not sure what that looks like. I know with the new proposal, with the MOU for the half-cent tax, half-percent tax, is increasing the money that's going to that emergency funding, or emergency response services, my apologies. And I think that that is an appropriate use for that. But I agree with Melinda. I think the county should take on a substantial part of that financial burden as well.
Dan?
The ambulance has been...has had problems for at least 10 years. I've been listening to this for a long time. They've got accounts receivable problems. I believe they have management problems now. And to tell you the truth, I think they need to figure out...it doesn't seem like anybody knows what the problem is, or maybe they don't want to find out. But they need to...they need to really figure out what the problem is and try to solve it. It's one of those situations that they've been...they've been feeding a dead horse for a lot of years, and somebody should figure it out.
Julia?
Thanks. The premise of the question seems to be that the county would come to the cities to ask for help with that funding. And I don't think that that's certain by any means. I think that's still a pretty open question, so it's difficult to commit right now. Clearly, we're not gonna let ambulance service go away from this town and from the county. So in the words of every good elected official, "Call your county commissioner." They have funded that service for decades and decades. And if they find difficulties and they do come to the city, then yeah, I would be first in line saying, "Let's figure out a way that we can solve this." But there would be clear trade-offs, right? That would be money that would be coming out of the city budget and away from other services we provide to you. So it is essential that you call us and call the county and help us understand what those trade-offs would look like, what services you might be willing to forego here in the city if we were to consider, in that hypothetical situation, helping out with that funding for the county. Thanks.
Lastly, Zach.
An essential service like an ambulance service really needs a dedicated funding source. And a half-cent sales tax, or half-percent sales tax allocation doesn't seem like the best way to make sure that there's reliable, available ambulance service in the future. My...an additional concern that I have, which was alluded to by Councilman Han, is that the ambulance service that we have is a private business. They have to bill for their services. Perhaps they should be more diligent about pursuing...well, about collecting that money from the people that they bill for those services. Anybody who's ridden in an ambulance knows that it's not cheap. And it would be nice if we could have something that's more akin to a dedicated, government-funded emergency service, where our tax dollars aren't necessarily going to enhance the profits of the people that own the ambulance service. Thank you. Thank you.
Julia, would you support using the half-cent sales tax for infrastructure?
The lift tax. That's a difficult one. We need more than a minute there. Um, we have been very wary of spending that money. In fact, we haven't spent that on any city priorities. We've looked to the city budget and our own revenue sources to supply those needs. Um, I would debate at great length if the, um, the ballot language for that tax would allow us to do that, or if it would be a wise use of our funds. So, uh, this is gonna be one where I'm not gonna give you a, a very clear answer that's black and white, but, uh, I will say that it's, it would be very tough, I think, to fit that in when that money can go to a good use and have a lot of impact elsewhere, and we have other sources of funding for what we need. Thanks.
Jenny.
Uh, so, I'm gonna have to, uh, refer to that, the ballot language and the, because the half-percent tax is voted on by the, uh, people in Lander and in Fremont County and in Wyoming. And if that were going to be a change to the use of the funds, that would have to be voted on, and the voters would have to choose for that to be what happens with those funds. It's not our decision to make, I don't think. I mean, the extra money would be great for roads, but it's not our decision to make. It is definitely the voters' decision to make.
Melinda.
I would say the, the easy answer is no. We only collect approximately 150,000 every quarter in half-cent sales. We just talked about the cost of pavement, the cost of building. It's not enough funds to really make a dent in those projects. It's necessary for other services, and one that I would shout out to really is WRTA. Uh, that resource is a big resource in our community, especially for those who can't afford, uh, to live here. So, I think that we have to be very careful. No, I am not in favor of using half-cent sales tax funding for infrastructure.
Zach.
I also am not in favor of using half cents, half-percent sales tax revenue for infrastructure for the same reasons that I've been sort of repeating myself on all evening, and that is that things that are absolutely necessary for a city to function need to have a dedicated funding source. If our current ability to fund our infrastructure projects is not adequate, then we really need to take a look at how we're generating that revenue, where that's coming from, and making sure that we can maintain the infrastructure we have and ideally be able to build better and newer infrastructure in the future. Thank you.
Dan.
Yes, I, I don't, uh, I don't agree with, uh, supporting that with the half-cent. But, uh, one of the other questions I have is, is, uh, how long do we, how long do the, do the people support private businesses out of their pocket? I, I have a big problem with that. Thank you.
So, Jenny, you get the first audience question. Do you believe Lander should encourage more high-density housing to increase affordable housing? If yes, what policies would you support to achieve this goal? If not, why not?
Uh, so, I would say I don't think we need high-density housing. I think what we need is some creative solutions, maybe like the, I like the idea that I've heard of the additional dwelling unit and, um, like adding a plus-one when it comes to densification. I don't think we need to put a, like what people are terribly afraid of is huge apartment complexes that are in the middle of town, blocking everything and just, you know, making thing, making Lander not feel the same as it has felt up to this point. But I do think there are ways that we can add an additional unit or residential spot on a lot or on a property that already exists, which technically is densification, but it's like U plus-one. That's what I really support.
Dan, what do you think?
Thank you. Uh, I tell you what, um, I believe in building. I, I believe in building sensibly. I, the, uh, the, the zoning that we have in front of us right now is 45-foot tall, five-foot offsets, basically half the parking. So, the parking is gonna go out on the streets in front of people's houses and, and this is gonna, what it's gonna do is it's gonna create a huge problem for the neighbors, and it's really gonna hit all the lands on, on the Northside. So, that's pretty much what's really gonna take the big hit on this. I'm hoping that we can come to some kind of happy terms before this goes through, but there's so many different things that people live in Wyoming and live in Lander, you know, the views, the view of the mountains, you know? Uh, when you put these 45-foot tall, uh, uh, houses, you know, you, you, you're impacting everybody in the neighborhood and views, sound, sight, everything. So, anyway, thank you.
Melinda.
It's a complicated issue, and I think that, again, it goes back to what I can't resolve for myself right now is what we have control over. So, we, by building high-density housing or making that available within our zoning, we cannot drive the price of that affordable housing. So, my concern is that we have to do something because there, we don't have, and I'm gonna move to attainable housing, we don't even really have that within our community. So, we have to address it. What we need to make sure we do is that however we approve or however we move forward, that we don't bring more problems to Lander than is necessary to resolve the problem. And the problem currently is that we don't have enough housing for our teachers that are coming in, for nurses that live here, for families that are trying to raise their families in Lander, unable to get housing because we don't have it. So, we have to address it.
Zach.
One of the few things that the city can do is attempt to increase the supply of housing. I think that what the Planning Commission and Board of Adjustment have done after the result of lots of compromise and lots of debate is a reasonably sensible solution that tries to address some of the needs in town. It's not a panacea. It's not gonna fix everything, but it's doing the only thing that we can possibly do to try to increase housing supply in a modest and deliberate way. Thank you.
Julia.
Yes, I mean, what I support is having a wider array of housing options in town and having a greater supply of housing in town. Um, I do think that there are neighborhoods where we could build apartment complexes and still maintain the character of those neighborhoods. We have those now. You can picture them. I think there are places where we can sensibly build, uh, multiple units on one lot, um, in the correct zones. We have those today. We'll have those under the current zoning if we don't change it, and we could have those, a wider option of those if we change it as well. So, I think it's, it's sometimes too easy to go home, look at our own neighborhoods, and picture a very tall apartment. And if that's not what you have next to you right now, that can be shocking. But I'd encourage us, drive around Lander, take a look. There is already a huge amount of, uh, variety in our housing, and that's what we're trying to increase in neighborhoods where that character is already there, while we maintain neighborhoods that have characters that some of us want, uh, that would look different than that.
You can keep that mic.
Okay.
What benefit and/or harm to Lander do you see with the anti-abortion presence on Main Street?
Oh, my goodness. What a great question. Um, I mean, the benefit is that we're exercising our freedom of speech in Lander and that we're learning about, uh, our neighbors and what they believe. There is no harm, I don't think, to having that presence, to have any of us advocating for what we believe, uh, in peaceful ways, uh, which those protests, or not protests, but those demonstrators have done. And so, um, I see only benefit and no harm. Thanks.
What do you think about that, Dan?
Freedom of speech, as long as it's sensible. I mean, if it's not people getting crazy, I mean, if it's, if it's nice and quiet and they don't bother people on the street, I don't see a problem with it.
Melinda.
I also don't see a problem with it. It's freedom of speech. It's also a good opportunity to have discussions with people that you don't necessarily agree with, to understand where they're coming from. I mean, there's some dedicated folks that are standing on corners in our community right now, and they're passionate, and it's important to talk to them and to understand where they're coming from.
Zach.
I do agree that there, while I can't perceive any harm that those particular protesters have done to the community. They're exercising the right of free speech in the exact place where we intend them to exercise that, which is in the public thoroughfares and in the public spaces. And so, I see no harm, and I'm glad that there's people dedicated to a cause. Thank you.
Jenny.
Uh, yeah, so, I'm gonna agree with everything that's already been said, because I agree of, in freedom of speech, I agree in the right for people to, um, assemble peacefully, uh, and sometimes not peacefully, but that's a different conversation. We can have it a different time. That doesn't have to be right now. But, um, I do believe that people have the right to have their voice be heard and to be seen in the public about what they care about. I don't see anything wrong with it. I don't think it's bad for Lander. I don't think it's good. I think it's like neutral. It's like, or it shows, hey, Lander is a place where you can come and you can voice your opinion. So, maybe it's really good for Lander.
So, we have one final question before closing statements, and I just wanna say that, uh, I'm not a member of the Legal Women Voters, but I've helped edit questions over the year for all of the primary forums that we held. And the audience questions tonight are excellent, and anybody in the audience who's writing these questions, you could join us. We're gonna keep doing these forums. So, Zach, you get to start us off. Please present your thoughts on levying an assessment on Knowles to assist with the Lincoln Street rebuild.
That sounds like an interesting source of revenue that perhaps ought to be explored, especially since Knowles occupies a pretty good stretch of Lincoln Street and also has a fair amount of its own fleet of relatively heavy school buses that operate up and down Lincoln Street on a regular basis. So, I see no reason not to explore a source of revenue from Knowles to help offset the burden to the general public. Thank you.
Melinda.
I honestly don't have an answer for that, really. I would have to have way more information, the why, um, you know, what the percentage of use is, more facts before I could actually answer that question.
Jenny.
I would say that's a conversation that the city council would need to have with Knowles and see what sort of agreement could be reached without having to forcibly do anything. Maybe if sitting down with Knowles and saying, hey, y'all are really benefiting from this street and the city really benefits from the street, is there something you're willing to help out with in some sort of agreement that we could come to without having to first jump to, you are going to do this?
What do you think, Julia?
Uh, no, I would oppose that. Uh, I don't wanna live in a town where we target one business unnecessarily. I think that is deeply unfair and unequal. Uh, picture what business we might come after next. Is that the type of government that you want to support? Uh, Knowles has an amazing economic impact in town, uh, has had for a very long time. Uh, but aside from what they are contributing to town and to our revenue and to our community, uh, yeah, deeply unfair and, and hopefully illegal to be able to tack, to be able to target, uh, one business for a levy like that.
Dan.
For once, or maybe tonight, I agree with... You know, it'd be nice to, it would nice, be nice to, uh, go and, and, and say, hey, would you like to, uh, you know, parley in with us and, and help us out with this? But, uh, in my right mind, um, you, you have a little section, it's really a, not that big of a section, that they have, and you have all, you have all kinds of businesses and, and people along that street. I, I, I wouldn't feel, uh, right, um, taking money from them when there's a lot of people that are gonna be affected with a, with a new road and everything they do. So, no, I, we agree. Hey!
Okay, we're gonna do closing statements. You only get a minute. You're gonna have to talk really fast, and let's go in reverse order from what we did before. So, we'll start with Dan.
This is gonna take a long time. I wanna thank everybody out there for coming tonight. I hope you had fun and maybe learned something, uh, about each and every one of us and kind of the way we think, and, and, uh, I would say, uh, go out and vote. Just go out and vote. That's, that's my closing statement.
That's a good statement. That's a good one. Uh, when we come together like this and we share our ideas, we are creating a stronger and more connected community. When we have people who are here, listening and participating and offering great questions and challenging the way that we think and coming up with ideas that maybe we didn't ever think of, it's really good to have that commitment from you all. And I promise that you would have that commitment from me to keep listening and to keep working and to ensure that every voice in our community is heard and respected. Thank you so much for your time, for coming out, and for your dedication to our community. I look forward to working with you further to build a better future for us all.
I mean, of course, ditto. It's super grateful to see a packed room like this, and I know this isn't the only one for these forums or any other forums by other groups. Uh, Lander is such a wonderful community, right? We come out, uh, to get informed, we come out to come together to create solutions, uh, we come out to celebrate and play. I really admire the can-do spirit we have here, the amount of volunteers who power a lot of efforts for the city, um, and that we have this, I think, heritage that we continue of, we can build it together. So, uh, this is a testament to that. It's an example of why frankly it's a lot of fun to be on the council, especially when Dan and I agree, although sometimes fun when we disagree as well. Um, I've enjoyed countless conversations over the last four years with people, uh, that I share a lot in common with and with people that I have a lot to learn from. Um, so, thank you for considering me when you go to the polls, and thank you for coming out tonight.
I think you've all heard enough about me this evening, and now I think it's my turn to hear a little bit more from you as we get closer to the election and even after the election, whether or not I do succeed in winning the election and, uh, replacing Ms. Stubble on the city council, I still would love to hear from all of you. Thank you.
Yes, thank you all for coming out tonight. What an incredible opportunity we've had to answer questions and interact, uh, with you as constituents and also just as community members. Lander is a special place. It holds a special place in my heart, and it will forever. And it's a place that we can come together with differences, but that we can also have quality conversations that don't always go well, and you can still see each other in the grocery store and be respectful and polite and live in a community that's so valuable. But we have a duty as a city council to move things forward. We've kind of stayed still just a little bit. We have this strategic plan priority list that we've not made a lot of progress on. We've done, there's a master plan coming. We need to continue to move that forward. The time is now for you to have input. As Zach said the other night at city council, they've worked on this zoning for four years without a lot of input. Come with input. Come with what you think is important to Lander, and let's start moving the needle on these priorities so that we can make Lander the best place that we all want to live in.
So, we asked you to hold your applause and comment, but now would be a great time. We're gonna have a brief intermission, and then we'll begin the school board forum, and I apologize for stumbling a little bit in my questions tonight. I was under anesthesia yesterday with the wonderful Ben Francisco. You can stay local for your surgeries now. It's awesome. Dan, well, thank you. I didn't even know.